Welcome to the City of Low Zone Board of Appeals meeting for July 24, 2023. This meeting is in person, but people have the option to join remotely via computer tablet, smartphone, or calling into the meeting as well. Just a few housekeeping items. If folks come to the lectern, if you can just sign in, whether you're speaking on a petition in favor or against, or presenting, you could just state your name and address for the record. Also, if you do have a cellphone or any kind of device that make noise, if you can turn it down, or put on vibrator, or shut it off, so it won't disrupt the meeting, it would be appreciated. Also, if people have conversations or talking amongst each other, you can do it outside in the hallway to also not disrupt the meeting, it would be greatly appreciated. Moving on, under continued business, we have none. Moving on, under new business, we have a petition. It's a variance applicant is Renee Turcot, property located at 79 New York Street. Renee Turcot has applied to the Low Zone Board of Appeals to construct. In addition, at 79 New York Street, that would exceed the maximum allowed floor area ratio FAR. The property is located in the traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district, and requires a variance under Section 5.1, and for any other relief required on the Low zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ian Ainsley. I'm an engineer from my Supreme Corporation, 142 Littleton Road in Westford. I'm here tonight with the applicant and trustees slash owners of the property, Renee and Dan Turcot. So this is an existing, single-family house in the traditional, single-family zone. It's very close to the Drakeet Town Line. What they want to do is add a second story to the house. The house right now is a two-bedroom house with, like I said, the single-story. They would reconfigure the first floor to turn that two bedrooms down there into a master bath and a master bedroom, and then they would have three bedrooms on the second floor for a total of a four-bedroom house. We are seeking a variance for the floor area ratio. The maximum allowed in this zone is 0.34. We're requesting a total of 0.52. I will say that this property is 5,600 square feet in lot area, which is smaller than what would typically be required for a new lot in this zone. So part of the reason why the floor area ratio increases is because the property is smaller than what would be currently allowed by zoning. So that's kind of a hardship related specifically to the property. I will also mention there are several second- and three-story buildings across the street and in the neighborhood, so I don't think this two-story, single-family house would be out of character for that area. I will also say that there is a flood plain on the property, flood zone, so that is part of the reason why they're not expanding outward and why they're going upward instead. If you're familiar with the state flood zone regulations, whatever you have to fill for your building or earthwork, you have to take away for a net zero. So for all those reasons, that's why we're trying to go vertical and get a FAR variance, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir, for that summary of the project. If you have more further comments, we're going to open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to open questions, the comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. Chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
I just want to say, there was the opposition letter that came over latest afternoon. I did read that, and I think your answer to why you didn't expand is a viable one. It does present the hardship. The neighborhood does have a lot of two-family house, two-story houses, including multiple across the street, and then as you go further down, down the street, there's more two-families. And then, I believe, the property directly behind us is also two stories?
Yes.
It is. So I don't think this would really affect the character of the neighborhood, so I'm in favor of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you, were you aware of the opposition letter that was received by the?
Yes, I received it today.
Okay. So, I mean, I just want to make sure that we get that on the record, that we did receive it from Paul Muriel Howard, who stated, "We oppose granting a variance to 79 New York Street for the following reasons: Odd number of homes are all ranch homes, and two-story house would not blend in well with the other homes. If more room is desired, they could build out their basement. These ranch homes are all prefab with two-by-three studded walls. Adding a second floor would require additional work and noise on the first floor. My wife and I are in our mid-80s. My wife has health issues, requires a lot of bedrest. Our home is on the quiet, dead-end street. The noise from all that construction would be a great burden that we don't want to have to deal with." Respectfully, Paul Howard. So, just to get that on the record, that we did receive an opposition. I will note my review of the area. They are correct that, starting from your client's property at 79 New York Street, they all appear to be ranch-sized homes that go all the way down to the dead-end area that are all single-family. I think there's probably one exception on the bottom end of the street. So I think it could go either way, as far as fitting it with the neighborhood. I understand there's other two-story residents on that street, but just looking at that home and looking at all the other ones, I don't know. I'm just trying to put, putting a second floor on it, and especially, I think what kind of concerns me is the amount of floor area ratio that we're looking to, looking for relief from. The typical FAR is .35. You're looking .57 to go up to, so.
.52.
.52, okay. It's still a lot. I mean, we're talking over 40% of that, so.
I will say that part of the floor area is the basement of the house, which is not really considered, you know, I wouldn't really consider that livable space where you could put a bedroom. You know, it counts as far as your gross floor area calculation goes. And the other component of that is because this property, like I said, is smaller than the minimum size required by zoning. Even a small amount of square footage, you know, generates a larger decimal for that FAR calculation, so.
Understandable, but the abatter did mention, well, if you're looking for more space, you have the basement that you could, looking for more living space, you have the basement, but, I mean, I'm guessing, what's being utilized for the basement? Is it just storage for things, or present? I'm just kind of, just trying to get an idea.
Dan Turcot, the basement is undevelopable as far as living space.
Okay.
There's only two small, three small windows, so it could never put a livable, legally livable space down there.
Okay.
Basement, I mean, a bedroom or a bathroom. You cannot use it by code or living space.
Okay. No, thank you for clarifying that, because.
Storage would be fine.
Yeah. Okay, makes sense. I mean, thank you for clarifying that.
There's no windows, there's no natural light.
Yep, okay. It's just.
And also, directly across the street is two new, relatively new structures of two floors.
Yeah.
Actually, there are three floors, because the garage is under. So, I mean, those are relatively new in the area also, and they're right directly across the street.
No, yeah, and I understand. I think that the, Jay, the abatter was bringing it up, and I think made a good point that if you look at your neighbors going down New York Street to the dead-end area, on your side of, on your side of the street, they're all single-family ranch homes. And again, with the exception that there's one on the other side, on the back, on the end of the street, that's a two fam, that looks like it was a ranch, maybe they built out, I don't know, but that's why I'm struggling a little bit with this, but.
We struggled with this, too. We would have much preferred to go out on the same level.
Yep.
But because of the flood zone, it's impossible.
Yeah, okay.
You just can't do that.
Okay. Good point. All right. I'll listen to my other fellow board members. I mean, I just wanted to bring the record of what the abutters said, and kind of, I can see where we're going, and this seems, seems it possibly could be workable, but again, I just wanted to get out my concerns as far as the character of the neighborhood and how it was set up, and the amount of FAR, but I'll listen to my other fellow board members and see what they have to say, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, but I do like the fact that you've, by right or by wrong, but you're not changing the character of the site in that the building addition is above the existing footprint. So we do maintain the off-street parking, we do maintain the green space, we do maintain the setbacks that are there, so I think that that's a benefit to the neighborhood, that at least the addition really just goes vertical in that sense. Could you just tell me why we need so much room on the second floor? It looks like it's three bedrooms, but there's a fourth room with a closet in it that looks like it might someday end up as, or could be used as a fourth bedroom. So that gives you five bedrooms, potentially, down the road?
Hi, Renee Turcot. I have a 30-year-old autistic son who lives with me. I also have a roommate, my friend Tracy Barbaro, she's lived with me for 14 years. And I also work from home, so I do need that dedicated office upstairs. You know, right now, I'm in my bedroom with my office, which is not, you know, the greatest, so if I could have an office and then, you know, living room for Justin and Tracy, that would be great.
I understand, okay. And I do agree that the basement most likely doesn't have the ceiling height required for a habitable space, and probably doesn't have window sill dimensions that allow for egress. So I think that you're right, that that, maybe other buildings or homes have converted their basements into habitable spaces, but may not meet today's building code. So I do agree with you, that would be a struggle, I think, to do that in that home. And the FAR does cover that basement, which, you know, if it was a slab on grade, you wouldn't have that issue. And where it's a basement that you really can't develop into livable space, it's kind of a burden, I think. But I think, more importantly, the fact that you've decided to place your addition directly above your footprint benefits the site. And I do think, Fran, we do have a height restriction in this neighborhood of about 35 feet, I believe, and we're well within that. I think the total building height is 30 feet, and that 35, I think, is to the halfway up the roof line, so we're well within the height restriction, so we don't need anything, any relief there, just as the buildings across the street all are within the height restriction. So really, just looking for relief for FAR here, so I think I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, for the reasons you cited, that a hardship exists here on this site, thus the need to build vertically. The footprint remains unchanged, and I will support this petition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Briere. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, but I do like the fact that you've, by right or by wrong, but you're not changing the character of the site in that the building addition is above the existing footprint. So we do maintain the off-street parking, we do maintain the green space, we do maintain the setbacks that are there, so I think that that's a benefit to the neighborhood, that at least the addition really just goes vertical in that sense. Could you just tell me why we need so much room on the second floor? It looks like it's three bedrooms, but there's a fourth room with a closet in it that looks like it might someday end up as, or could be used as a fourth bedroom, so that gives you five bedrooms, potentially, down the road?
Hi, Renee Turcot. I have a 30-year-old autistic son who lives with me. I also have a roommate, my friend Tracy Barbaro, she's lived with me for 14 years. And I also work from home, so I do need that dedicated office upstairs. You know, right now, I'm in my bedroom with my office, which is not, you know, the greatest, so if I could have an office and then, you know, living room for Justin and Tracy, that would be great.
I understand, okay. And I do agree that the basement most likely doesn't have the ceiling height required for a habitable space, and probably doesn't have window sill dimensions that allow for egress. So I think that you're right, that that, maybe other buildings or homes have converted their basements into habitable spaces, but may not meet today's building code. So I do agree with you, that would be a struggle, I think, to do that in that home. And the FAR does cover that basement, which, you know, if it was a slab on grade, you wouldn't have that issue. And where it's a basement that you really can't develop into livable space, it's kind of a burden, I think. But I think, more importantly, the fact that you've decided to place your addition directly above your footprint benefits the site. And I do think, Fran, we do have a height restriction in this neighborhood of about 35 feet, I believe, and we're well within that. I think the total building height is 30 feet, and that 35, I think, is to the halfway up the roof line, so we're well within the height restriction, so we don't need anything, any relief there, just as the buildings across the street all are within the height restriction. So really, just looking for relief for FAR here, so I think I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, for the reasons you cited, that a hardship exists here on this site, thus the need to build vertically. The footprint remains unchanged, and I will support this petition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Briere. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with the board members. At first, I was concerned about the FAR, but, I mean, it's a reasonable explanation that, you know, the basement is not livable, and you have to, you know, build up. So, I mean, it does fall into that hardship, and especially with your son and having to work from home, which a lot of us still do, and we need that space. So with that intent, I would support this, this project. I don't know if, and the fact that you're keeping the landscape the way it is, I don't know if you can add some trees around there a little bit?
No changes at all.
Beg your pardon?
There'll be no changes to landscaping at all.
Okay. Okay. I don't know if you heard, I said, that if you can, would you consider adding some shade trees around? I don't know if it's possible.
Most certainly, but again, the lot and the confinements of the lot, the space between the houses is very limited, and if the neighbor didn't object to a tree, I should, I could put a few trees. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but it may create more of a hardship to them, because they don't want it there, because, you know, I mean, there's not a lot of space on either side of the building. And if there was, if you had room out there for shrubbery and whatnot, it would be there by now.
Okay.
None of those houses have any sizable trees because of that, I assume.
Got you. It makes sense?
If somebody wanted some bushes on the side, it certainly could be done, but I think that there, the amount, there's not going to be any noise coming from the house after we're in living in it.
Makes sense, okay. I appreciate that explanation. Yeah, I'll be voting in favor of this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Mr. and Mrs. Turcot, I do believe that your application has a lot of merit in terms of what you're trying to do. I do agree that the relief you're seeking for the floor area ratio, it is substantial, it's almost above, almost 50%, but in terms of prerequisite, I think the way that your house and the lot sits and is by the flood plain, I do believe that is a creative way to add on to this, to the house that you need, and, you know, you need the space for your growing family and kind of for the living situation you're in, you know, so, and I think, you know, ultimately, it's going to benefit not just the neighbors, even though we do have abutters and disagreement, I think in the long run, it's going to benefit the whole city. It's a very nice property, I drove by it, we keep it very well, so thank you for that. So I think it would still fall in line with the character of the neighborhood, and it still will align with the intent of zoning, in my opinion, so I do see the merit, so I'll be voting in favor. Any of my other colleagues have any other comments or questions? Seeing, oh, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
I'd just like to push back a little harder on the shade tree. I think that we do have most properties with shade trees in that neighborhood, and I think that you could certainly accommodate one shade tree in the front yard that would do a lot to help with the shading coefficient, especially on that street. So we do, in the city, need to do something about climate change mitigation with pavement, and I think that a shade tree on your property would be a nice gesture, and I think we should ask for that as a condition.
You tell me what kind of tree, and I'll put it on. That's not a big deal. I mean, we're looking to expand for reasons that we need it.
Yep.
A tree, certainly not going to.
So I think as the condition might.
Not going to add any problem.
I think a condition might be to provide one shade tree and work with the Department of Planning and Development to develop a landscape plan to show one shade tree, and so they could suggest that particular species.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Any other comments by my colleagues? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-21 for variance at 79 New York Street for a variance for FAR ratio, and with the following condition, that the applicant provide one shade tree and work with DPW, a DPD, to develop a landscape plan showing that one shade tree.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman, pack.
Approve the condition.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve the conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, folks, you've been approved. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you, thank you, folks. All right, moving on to our next scheduled agenda item under new business, we have ZBA- 2023-22, a special permit. The applicant is Jessica Kolowski, apologize if I said that wrong, Kolokowski, apologize again. Property located at 900 Trump Street. The, it's under Section 6.3. The petition is Sign Design Inc. has applied to the Low Zone Board of Appeals to install an internally illuminated wall sign at 900 Trump Street. The property is located in the high-rise commercial HRC zoning district and requires special permit under Section 6.3, and for any other relief required under the Low Zoning Ordinance.
Hi, I'm Marie Mercier with Sign Design. I'm actually here via Zoom tonight. I am representing my client, which is the company, and I apologize, my screen keeps on freezing over here. My client is with Little Sprouts, and they're looking to get a special permit relief for, to have their channel-lit interior, it's an internally illuminated sign. Do you mind if I not, my video keeps freezing on me over here, I apologize. So they're looking to get an internally illuminated sign. It would only be Little Sprouts in the logo. The early education and childhood would not be lit. This sits so far off the street that we're just looking to bring attention to the Little Sprouts Early Education Center. So we just need the relief of if we'd be able to have an illuminated sign on the property.
Thank you, Ms. Mercier. If you have no other comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to open questions, the comments to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Does Little Sprouts have any control over the hours that the sign would be lit?
So they would only, I mean, of course, like, this is summer, so, you know, most of the kids will be picked up by the end of the day, but they will abide by, you know, having it on. They're probably going to be shutting it off, I would say, by 7:00 PM. They're not going to leave it on all night long.
I believe the rule is an hour after the business closes? Is that correct? So I just put that as.
Yeah, that's why I figured, like, 7:00, because I'm sure most kids would get picked up, because it is an early education, but it is also a childcare center, so I would say that most kids would get picked up by 6:00 PM.
Okay, as long as they abide by that, that, I'm fine with this.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Thank you, Ms. Havi. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is pretty straightforward. I mean, the business is located in a very far-off part of the building area from the street, and bringing attention to its availability would be beneficial to the business and to the community as a whole. I'm sure, I'm not sure if there's many people that know Little Sprouts is there, to begin with, based on its location, and I'm sure it does, how long, it's been, it's been there for a while, right? It's been several years?
It's been there for a while, but the sign that they have now is, it's a non-illuminated sign, and across the board with all the Little Sprouts, they're rebranding, so since they're rebranding, they would like to get the internally illuminated sign put in.
Okay. Yep, makes, it makes sense, as long as the, you know, if we can condition it with the hours of illumination, I believe we're. I believe what we usually do is one hour before sunrise to one hour after business close or sunset, whichever comes later. So, and presuming that the business isn't going to be open all night, I'm guessing, I'm going to guess a lot of parents are not going to leave their children there overnight, so it doesn't really make any sense, so. But I would be supportive of the, I would be supportive of the petition with that condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to ask, the sign that's there now, is that illuminated?
No.
Okay. And so is, is it more than just the canopy that's the signage now, or is it just the canopy over the door?
It is just, hold on one second, I apologize. It's actually just the canopy, and the sign is on the canopy.
Yeah, so this is a vast improvement.
Exactly.
And then you're also doing a wall graphic as well?
They're looking to put the tree in, Little Sprouts, you know, it's growing.
Beautiful. It's, it's a nice improvement. You've changed the colors there a little bit as well, so I'm really looking forward to seeing this.
I think they just got, yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. I think they just got the building painted a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, it looks great. It's a vast improvement. It feels more like a cafe, restaurant graphically, but it's, it's beautiful. And I'm really looking, really looking forward to this happening, and I wish you a lot of success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Briere. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to answer Member Callahan's question about how long it's been there. My, my daughter, who just turned 21 on Saturday, was there, so it's been there for a while. I, I think this is, again, it's, it's a no-brainer. I think you, you intend to meet all the guidelines with respect to illumination hours, and I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I think this is definitely, you know, much needed, to be honest with you, so.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. Ms. Mercier, I think, to me, it's pretty straightforward, this application. It's just about marketing and to show people where it's located and signage, and it's, it's done very appropriately and tastefully. So I, I don't see any objections, so I'll be voting in favor as well. Any other comments before we go to a motion? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZVA 2023-22 for a special permit at 900 Chelmsford Street for an internally illuminated sign with the condition that the hours of operation, that the illumination, it takes place only from one hour before sunrise to one hour after closing or 8:00 PM.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can you have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve with condition.
Member Callahan.
Approve with condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve with condition.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, ma'am, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Have a good evening. Moving on to our next scheduled item on the agenda under new business, we have ZVA dash 2023 dash 23. The applicant is Donna Drakolakis. I apologize again. I'm horrible with names, sorry. Apologize. Property located at 20 Starbird Street. The applicant is seeking approval for section 5.1. Section 6.1 has applies to the Low Zoning Board of Appeals, seeking a variance to approve to construct a new single-family home at 20 Starbird Street. The lot previously had a single-family home, but it has been demolished. The subject property is located in the traditional family TSF zoning district. The project requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals per section 5.1 for relief from the maximum floor area FAR requirement, per section 6.1 for relief from the maximum curb requirement, and any other relief required under Low Zoning Ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having us. My name is Donna Drakolakis. I'm the owner at 20 Starbird Street. I'm here today with my fiancee, Stephen Econo, and our architect, Bond Worthington. We're here to tonight to discuss 20 Starbird Street as we're seeking variance approval from the zoning board of appeals to construct, as you said, a new family home with an attached two-car garage. The lot previously had a single-family home, but has since been demolished. 20 Starbird Street is in a traditional single-family zone and has a lot size of 96.84 square feet. We are seeking variance approval per section 5.1 for relief of the maximum floor area ratio requirement. We are proposing an FAR of 0.6, which requires a 0.25 of relief. The previous property, before demolition, had an FAR of 0.42. We are also seeking variance approval per section 6.1 for the relief of maximum curb cut requirement. There are currently two existing curb cuts. We're proposing to make one 24-foot curb cut and relocate, that would be relocation of one of the curb cuts to the 24-foot curb cut and maintain the existing, one of the others existing curb cuts. Our proposal meets all other zoning requirements. We received and acknowledged the memo and comments from the Department of the Planning, Development, and City Engineers. We will work with our contractors and city officials to ensure we are complying with all codes and regulations, requirements, and permits for the construction of the new proposed home. We will continue to utilize Meisner Brem, which is a, the engineering firm for the required systems, including stormwater drainage and utilities. We will communicate and seek approval from the LRWWU as soon as possible following this hearing. The proposed plans demonstrate a similar architectural design to the previous dwelling, which is in the character of the neighborhood. This is done so without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning district. The goal of the project is to rebuild in a manner that reflects modern building techniques to provide a safe, high-quality, and more energy-efficient home. Relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The new house will also comply with the City of Lowell Master Plan as well as substantial sustainable Lowell 2025. I'd like to wrap up by saying 20 Starbird Street has been in my family for 80 years. My great-grandparents bought this plot of land in 1943. It would be a great honor to continue to keep this land in our family for more generations. The proposed home will house me, my fiancee, Stephen, and our three-year-old son, as well as extra living space for our elderly parent on the first floor with handicap access. I currently work from home, so this will allow me the space to work from home, as well as my fiancee has his own business, so he'll need space as well. The space will be free-flowing with the rest of the house, with no locked doors. By allowing the additional square footage, we'll be able to house our growing family, as well as elderly parents who are suffering. I have two parents currently suffering from the housing crisis and rising rent. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am, for that summary of your project. If you have no further comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Bond Worthington, architect, with address of 110A Inman Street, Cambridge, Mass. If it would be helpful, Donna covered pretty much everything, but if it would be helpful, I could go through the plans and the variance being requested in just a little more detail.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, if you, if you don't mind, sir.
Okay, and I, I believe you're familiar with the plans that have been submitted, but, in terms of, in terms of what we're seeking relief on, it is FAR, it is, it is a floor area, the number of units is conforming. The front yard setback conforms, porch projections conform. The garage is at 24 feet, which also conforms. We have 10 side yard setbacks to the north, we have 15 to the south, so somewhere 25. And the back is more than double the 20, the 20 feet is required. So while this is more floor area, we are keeping to the, to the setbacks, and it is in agreement with the rest of the homes on the street. And the other homes are two and a half stories. In terms of the FAR, most of it, the overage is due to the attic, which we're, we've done so to kind of keep the existing appearance of what was the existing house. We pitched the roof. It's just storage there. There's no living space. There's no dormers. So that's counting against us. And then the way the topography is on the site, the site rises up from the street, so towards the back of the lot, the basement is really below grade quite a bit. So not an opportunity for much living space there. So that's, that's, that's the gist of it. We think it fits with the character of the neighborhood. But I believe that this relief would be a detriment to the neighborhood. And we think it would be a major improvement over the house that was disrepaired there for so long. So continue to be able to stay within the same family and, you know, and replace something that was, was once really a nice house with yet another nice house.
Thank, thank you, sir, for that detailed summary of the project. Appreciate it. If you have no further comments, we'll open up the, the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Now we're going to open questions, comments from the board. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of questions regarding the site plan. First of all, this, I like the, I like the layout of the, of the house and everything. Looks great. And I think it'll fit in with the neighborhood, but I noticed on the site plan, there's a pair of sheds. One, there's two existing sheds on it, supposedly to be on the property. Those, those are getting, those getting raised? Those are, they're going to be removed, okay. Because it wasn't noted in the proposed, I know you note the handicap ramp, and it's going over where the shed, one of the sheds is supposed to be, I presume. It's, it's gone if you put in the handicap ramp, and so, but it needs, we're going to need updated plans just to note that those two sheds are going to be, are going to be removed. And as far as the curb cut is concerned, I don't think it even noted the amount of the proposed curb cut, like how, how large it's going to be. I do see, I mean, it notes the 72 feet of the border, but no, it doesn't say how long the curb, the, the new curb cut you're going to have going into the garage, how long that's going to be. Do you have?
24 feet.
24, 24 feet? Okay. What's, what's, what's the max, the max is 15, Fran?
Sorry, the max is 15 for?
For curb cut and TSF? Dennis is shaking his head, so he knows.
Yeah, so, okay.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, no, because that, that would have to be another variance that part of, we'd have to add on, but it was unclear from the plans what that, the proposed curb cut is going to be, so one of the variances would have to be that.
My apologies.
Yeah, no worries, yeah, no worries. The other thing, as far as the sidewalk is concerned, I mean, I know, and I did squeeze by, go by the property a little bit, and I just frame a reference, it went on to Google Maps, and I see that from the prior driveways and the curb cuts, you got two, two separate curb cuts there. Somehow those got a, when you put the new driveway in, you're going to kind of have to somehow fix the sidewalk to block out those, those curb cuts. Because otherwise, the whole thing's now going to wind being,
So I, I did receive the engineering comments this morning.
Yep.
The curb cut to the left of the property, the south, we plan on filling that in.
Yep.
And relocating that to fill for the 24-foot driveway. We would like to maintain the curb cut to the north.
Okay.
There's a 24, I mean, a 12-foot curb cut to the north. So we would fill in the, the left-hand curb, that's an existing driver, we'd fill that in, that would allow for 15 feet of curb.
Okay.
Then the 24-foot driveway. And then we'd have another 21 feet of curb. And then 12 feet of existing curb cut.
We have, we have a supplemental schedule, so.
Okay, yeah, if you have, if you want to submit, that'd be great. It'd be, makes it so much easier.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Proko, oh, yes, sir.
I am the unfortunate person that's sitting next to this machine that makes a lot of noise. If I could ask the applicants to speak into the microphone?
Oh, yes, folks, if you don't mind speaking directly into the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank, thank you. Apologize. Thank, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, that's, okay, that's, that's what I was looking for, was the existing curb cut on the left-hand side of the property. And then the existing curb cut on the right, the existing curb cut on the right-hand side of the property. Now you're going to fill those both in with the 24-foot curb cut being proposed to go to the driveway in the middle. That's, that's what's being, that's what's being.
It wants to be, relocate what's on the south, so that we're square on the garage with 24 feet. And then the existing to the north, the 12 that's already there, they just want to keep. And in between those two, there'll be about 15 feet of length, oh, 21 feet of length that a vehicle, vehicle can park in. So, and they will repair the curbs in that area. This is, this is just a preliminary sketch. It will be fully engineered.
Okay. All right, well, we want to go with what's on here, the proposed curb cut. That's, that, that would be my, that's the way I would like, I would like to see it happen, so. Because I'm, I'm just, again, going by the Google Maps and everything. Because it appears that that one on the left-hand side, it looks like, and also in the site plan, you have an existing pathway that's going all the way back to your backyard and stuff, too, right, so. Okay. All right. That's all I, that's all I really had. Again, I think this is, there's a lot of relief, but I think this would work. And, you know, for your building family, as well as your parents, and the Drakolakses being members of the community for so long, I wish you the absolute best of luck. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to commend my fellow board member for being able to pronounce that last name so well. Oh, my goodness, rolled right off your tongue. Drakolakis? Oh, my gosh.
Rolls off the tongue.
I have a couple of questions. But I, I, I think it's a great story. Oh, my gosh. To be able to stay in that location, property originally bought by your grandparents. Great, great story. And I think we should do all we can to support it. I, I love the house design. It's the massing, you know, I saw the site plan, I was like, oh, it's just a square, but it does, it's not, it's got some great massing. I love the stepping of the wing that comes out over the garage.
We tried to maintain as much of the integrity and the look of the original house that was there. That was, that was the goal out of the gate, you know, for this, so the feedback is appreciated.
Yeah, it, it does two things. It, it kind of nods to the existing structure, but then recognizes the need for, you know, covered parking. Parking garages are a nice thing to have. And this lovely wing off the side is just nicely articulated with the dormer in the roof area there. Very, very nicely done. I, I do think we are lacking in the site plan, and we do, I think, need to condition this approval if it goes forward with a couple of things. Remember, Callahan mentioned the updating the site plan for the curb cut, I guess. That, that in addition, I think we also need the site plan updated for the extent of the handicap ramp, which I think would come all the way down to the sidewalk, I'm guessing. And,
You can discuss that further and propose.
And then my, my true joy in life, these And then my, my true joy in life these days is getting shade trees on streets. And so I'd like to see a shade tree provided along the street side to be added to the site plan as well.
There's one existing on the front right corner of the property. We can put one on the front left.
Yes, please. Yes.
Absolutely.
And what a change from what was there to this.
It's been a long time coming.
It's, it's, go ahead.
I want to make it a point to thank the neighbors and the patience of the neighbors through this process. You know, we've been very fortunate to have an open line of communication with them. We've been already fortunate to get to meet some of them. When we had the house knocked down, we had multiple families with other kids walking by, partaking in the excitement and seeing all the commotion. So to be able to meet other families in there that have young kids, as, as young as ours, is exciting, you know. And to already be received and welcomed in, into the neighborhood is exciting. So we're looking to do more than just build a house. We're looking to be part of the neighborhood. So I want to recognize that on behalf of the neighbors.
And potentially have a living space for an elderly member of the family. Grand slam home run, in my opinion. You, you meet frontage, you meet setbacks, you meet lot area, you meet height regu, you, you meet open space. You have so many things going for your application. So I think I can support it with that one condition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was a real easy one for me. Your petition benefits your family and in doing so enhances the neighborhood. Count me on board. I wish you the very best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I do agree with my fellow members here. I must say that you mentioned one thing that's important to me as a board member is that you discussed this with the neighbors. And with all of the aspects of things that comes before this board, you know, not everyone, you know, meets with their neighbors. And the fact that you are part of this community and your family, as you said, you know, from a generational perspective, that you plan to live there and keep the roots there is impressive to me. So, and again, it looked like you did your homework to meet the guidelines. So I am totally impressed and I will be on board as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I agree. Meeting with the neighbors and, you know, not having anybody here opposing you, you know, speaks volumes. The, the project looks great. And then working with your family and especially with housing. So I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I do have some clarific, clarification questions on the site plan, the proposed one. The curb cut to the right currently has a gravel driveway. What do you plan to do with the gravel there? I know it was mentioned, somebody thought that the handicap ramp came down to the street. So what's the proposal there? It doesn't really say on the site plan. It's just kind of blank, so.
Certainly, we would want some sort of paving there and that would be fully engineered and the rest of the smaller, the rest of the make sure that it's accessible and so on. Getting out of the area. It's just not completely designed yet, but it would certainly be improved once there to the standards.
So is the gravel driveway going to be gone?
We can pave it. I mean, if, if we can work with the city to maintain or have that piece of cut that's already there, continue to be maintained there. And if it means paving it to improve the appearance of that, then we'd be happy to.
Right. So it's going to be used as a second driveway as well as the twenty-four?
The goal ultimately, yes, for off-street parking during snow. That way they would have access to the handicap ramp.
Okay, so it's going to be twelve feet curb cut. The driveway is going to be, not meet the minimum standard there. Because it should be fifteen. And it can't be gravel. It has to be asphalt.
I believe that the, the minimum width in that zone is eight feet.
Eight feet on the driveway?
Yeah.
But you can't have the gravel. So if it's going to be a driveway, which it doesn't really kind of say on the site plan, if we can get that in there and then, you know, get it up to the correct standards, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. You know, I, I do believe that the relief you're seeking, it's, it's substantial. But in my opinion, what you're doing, kind of rehabbing or putting up this new home in this lot, it really, it's really going to add a lot of value and character to, to the neighborhood. And kind of to your credit, you know, the, the Puckettville neighborhood group, you know, if, if they were, they're very active and very involved. So if, if they're not here and there's Noah Butters, you guys definitely did your part in doing the right thing and, you know, building this home that's tastefully done. You could have, I think, even seek three or two family. It probably, probably would have been extremely hard and probably didn't go through. But so I think this is tastefully done. I think it falls in line with the, the character of the neighborhood. I, I really love that story of how you're preserving kind of the, the family legacy and continuing honoring your family and just keeping the lot and kind of rebuilding, repurposing this land and keeping it to its original kind of character as much as possible. I think, I think that's a beautiful, beautiful thing. So I, I think the relief you're seeking, in my opinion, can be granted.
Thank you.
And then we discuss a few of the conditions, just some of the updated site plans to reference, like, like we talked about the curb cut, the handicap ramp, did rest a shed, the landscaping for the, the shade tree on the site. And then all the comments by DPD. You're going to address those. So if you're amenable to all these conditions, we'll move forward.
We are.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, folks. Any other comments from my colleagues before we move forward with a motion?
Mr. McCarthy, floor is yours, sir.
I'm very confused about the additional driveway. Because I think a driveway, Fran, we need to have eighteen feet by eight feet as a minimum size. And then we need three feet from the property line and three feet from the structure.
Correct.
So that adds up to more than ten feet. Eight feet and then another six is fourteen. And then you'd be beside the house. So you're looking for a variance for a side, for, for a driveway that's not shown on the site plan, I think. Is that correct?
It's, it is pre-existing non-conforming when the original house was there. So it's, it's, the driveway is remaining in its current form, although it is a new house. So technically, maybe that is a variance.
I think technically it is because the house is different than the existing house.
Okay. We're largely in the same footprint that the original house was in on that side. We have a, we have a, we're slightly closer. By two or three feet. The, the addition of that driveway there makes, makes it possible for relatives to, to stay at the house. That's why we're asking for it.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure that my fellow board members understand that we're providing additional variance for not meeting either the green space between the driveway and the neighboring property or the green space required between the driveway and the house or both? Without seeing a, without seeing the driveway on the site plan, you really aren't giving us the detail we need to provide the variance. Understand my point?
Is it possible that could be a secondary application after this? And we can do that. We can do the house now and, and a condition is, with the site plan, is part of that for that curb cut?
Fran, does that make sense? To come back before the board for another variance for the driveway? Once the driveway is decided on how they want to do it?
The driveway is not final, the final design?
No, so this is additional driveway that's on the north side in that ten-foot setback. They want to put an eight-foot driveway there that's not on the plan right now. And it's not finalized because I don't know if the ramp works with the driveway. I don't know how the driveway and the ramp interact, so.
Yeah, so how we would treat it from like a permitting standpoint would be they could get approval now and then at a later date if they want to. But when they build the house, they can only build what was approved here now. At, at a later date, if they'd like to create a driveway that is not dimensionally compliant and needs variances, they would have to submit another variance application. It's up to the applicant whether they'd want to do that because then they'd have to notify Butters again.
I know.
Pay for everything again.
I know.
So it's either modify the plan now, finalize it now, and get the variance relief during this current process or repeat the process again at a future date. So it's up to the applicant.
So what do you want to do, folks? Did you get all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. The goal, the goal of having that second curb cut to the north is to allow more access to getting the, my elderly father closer to the, the entryway. We don't necessarily need it to be a driveway, but allowing us to get up there, we don't, the existing curb cut would allow that to get us closer to the handicap ramp and walkway. We don't necessarily need it for a driveway, but an entry point to get the, and we're working, we're willing to work with the city on what.
I agree. I think you should, I think you should go with what you have here and without the driveway at the moment and figure out what you really want to have down the road as to what you want to show. Because, you know, you could be locking yourself into something you don't really need as much as, you know, a walkway that might have some gravel on the sides for incidental parking off-site, maybe. I don't know. But you probably want to build, move in, see how you live there, and then figure out what the driveway should be down the road.
I agree.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. That was, yeah, very good information. Thank, thank you, sir.
Should we just, I guess, explain, they're going to have to submit new site plan with what we, what we need from down, like, right down.
Right, we'll have a condition.
Okay. I just want to make sure we got everything, so. Dennis can read it off. And if he's missing anything, I'll pull it in.
All right, three, Mr. Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three for Twenty Starboard Street for a variance for FAR requirements. With the condition that you provided a revised site plan showing the curb cut design with the twenty-four foot wide curb cut for the driveway and then the existing twelve-foot curb cut to remain to update the site plan to show a street shade tree on the south corner of the lot to update the site plan to show the sheds to be removed at the rear of the site. And to update the site plan to show the handicap ramp access to the sidewalk.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approval conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approval conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approval condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approval conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member, member Nickerson.
Approving conditions.
All right, folks, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck with your project. Good luck with your family.
Please, is this, is it, is it one condition with all that material on the site plan? So that, that site plan, revised site plan shows that additional information?
Please, can you have a correction?
Yes. That's it, yep.
All right, moving on to.
Curb cut, curb cut.
All right. Thank, thank you about that, guys. All right, moving on to other business on the agenda. We have minutes for approval for June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Any comments, corrections, additions, edits to the minutes by my colleagues? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty-six?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy. Second by Mr. Proko. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All ayes. Minutes have been approved. Any other comments or questions for my colleagues before we adjourn, adjourn the meeting?
I, I just want to mention the timeframe for the opening a meeting and reviewing it, I think, is a hundred days. And so I think we just need to make sure that we, if we, if an applicant goes beyond the hundred days with their hearing, that we get the correct documents signed or notifications done specifically for, I think it's nineteen Gibson Street. I think it's going to be close to the hundred day or beyond the hundred day, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that point of information, Mr. McCarthy.
I, I mean, I agree with Dennis, but I think the statute also says that we can continue it with, in writing. But the argument being, if they, if the applicant asked for us at a meeting for a continuance and we grant it, that's, that's on the rec, that's on the record that the continuance was granted and that, that extends the hundred day limit. So I think that, yeah. Yes. I thought, I mean, I thought I heard the, the plaintiff would have something in writing that they have the applicant submit. Maybe we do something similar to that. And also the other thing, Fran, my recollection, again, also reading the statute, is we, the first meeting must be done within sixty-five days of the application. And I know we recently just started limiting, trying to limit the thing. But we might have to address that if that's going to be an issue as far as applicant, applications coming in. You know, I think we limited to what, seven? I think that's what we're, what was our agreed upon thing? So, or six? So if, I want to make sure we're not outside that, the statute realm of an application. We get a bunch of applications in and we're putting some ninety days out, we can't do that. So I think that's something we might want to look into going into the fall.
Yeah.
When we get more. I mean, I'm all about limiting the list if we have to, but if it's going to create chaos and we're not going to comply with the statute, then we may have to readdress that and take it.
Right. I think there are sometimes extenuating circumstances, like, for example, I know in some towns there are not enough ZBA members and they're trying to recruit a member. And it's like, what do you do in that instance where you get an application, but three months pass until you finally have enough people to meet? So I, I think in, in our case, we not only have that, the internal rules where we say maximum of five applications, but also Dylan and I are working through the backlog of applications still. I would consider that, I think, if, if someone were to challenge it, providing evidence of, hey, we suffered from a ransomware attack and didn't have internet for two months, like, that we are doing our best to comply. And I think that's what's important. And, and as long as we're showing that we're putting things on as soon as possible, as soon as we can, I think that that shows our intention to comply with that.
Yeah.
Law. And I know that, that law was put, or those provisions are put in place to, to prevent people from delaying things needlessly to try to avoid having to vote on it and to, to kind of knock down maybe applicants for an application that they don't want to face head on. But I think as long as we're showing that we're doing our best to get things on as quickly as, as we can and reasonable, and have, we have a reason for it. We have a backlog that we're working through. I think that that shows that we're complying with the spirit of that regulation. And then, yeah, to your point, getting. and then, yeah, to your point, getting written continuance forms on the fi, on file for all applications that have longer, that, that the board is working through for an extended period of time will be important-
Yeah.
For some of these applications, to make sure everything is covered.
Cool, yep, and I know in the past, there's been some instances, and I know you guys are busy, obviously, just you and Dylan, so, I mean, you guys are doing God's work with that, but, where we've taken the application in, but not everything is there, like, they're missing something, or they didn't pay the fee, or something to that effect, but we still put it on the thing, I don't know if that's something that, you guys can work-
For example, what, like?
I thought that, there might've been some instances in the past where an application was taken in, and it was just put on the record, but they didn't pay the fee or something. I remember that happened at least once, where they didn't pay the filing fee-
Yeah.
And it was still put on, it was still put on for hearing.
Sure, I don't think that's happened, we do have a, it, I don't think it's happened since then, but we changed our, we have a checklist we work from, so we added, like, double-check that you have everything. And once we've added that, it's, it's, has not been a problem, um, but yeah.
Okay, no, just kind of a couple of things that kind of popped up recently about, when I was looking at the statute and stuff, and I was like, oh-
Sure.
Maybe we have to think about this, if, we have to limit the list, but-
Yeah.
Guess we'll cross to that bridge when we get there.
Yeah.
All right, cool, thanks.
And thank you, Ms. Callahan, and thank you, Mr. Signiannos. Any other comments for my colleagues before we adjourn? I'm seeing none, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good night, folks.